Good morning. It's August 13th, 9:00 AM. I will call the order of the meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners to order. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here. Please, if you're able to stand, join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission? Okay, so at this time, we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda comprised of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, the FY24 year-end community corrections audit report, the year-end community corrections report to KDOC on audit programming, the end-of-year corrections, community corrections juvenile program report, the year-end community corrections report to KDOC for juvenile programming, community corrections juvenile budget amendment, the community corrections juvenile budget amendment. This is a transfer of funds from one category to the other, does not affect the total budget amount. KDOC additional funding signatory approval. KDOC awarded the additional funding to community corrections after the adult grant had been approved by the advisory board and commission. Approval is needed for community corrections to accept the additional funding. The juvenile KDOC carryover budget, the juvenile KDOC carryover budget annual budget required by KDOC for agency reimbursement, the adult KDOC carryover budget, the adult KDOC carryover budget annual budget to require KDOC for agency reimbursement dollars, the approval of the county commission meetings for August 6th, the extension of the July 31st disaster declaration, the approval of the lease termination with TTL 123 Incorporated, and the approval of the public foreign agenda. Are there any items that any commissioner would like to have removed or speak about?
Not at this time.
Okay. If not, I will bring it back to commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agendas, Brendan.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Okay, move us into the action items.
Road petition update.
Good morning, Mr. Chairmembers of the commission, County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. So, a couple of meetings ago, the commission was presented with a petition pursuant to Kansas statutes annotated 68-117 to open a public road to a landlocked parcel. The commission requested additional information on four different items, including whether the opening of a public road would constitute a taking of property, whether the commission is obligated to provide access to landlocked parcels, the status of an easement from 1894, and the history of farming over the previous access path. County Councilor Mike Montoya has provided his opinion, and there was a memo attached to the item today. We believe the petition process must still be followed because the 1894 easement does not get all the way to the property line. The statutes don't grant the county commission a great deal of discretion once the process has been initiated. Mr. Montoya, in his memo, outlined the procedure. It is somewhat different than condemnation procedure, but it has the same legal effect. The county engineer's office was unable to determine the exact date that the path might have been farmed over, but it was sometime since 1965. And both county councilor Montoya and staff of the county engineer's office are in attendance today. So, today, staff is asking if the commission has any additional questions that you would like researched. Otherwise, it would be our recommendation to proceed forward as provided in the statute.
The only question I got is said that you figured it's 1965 when this was, the road was farmed over?
It was after that, Joe. Pat of Valerius. Of course, I was raised and grew up a quarter mile in the house next to that. I would say within the last seven to 10 years, the road, unbeknownst to me, who did this, the farmer who we rent from us, did take out the road. Unbeknownst to any of us, no one was aware of the 1894 county road. It hasn't been a part of the county maintenance or care, custody, control. We thought it was just a road back to where our house used to be. We had no idea at that point it was a county road. So, to answer your question, long answer, I'd say within the last 10 years.
Okay. And this question for staff, I guess, you said that that road is just short of making that a complete road to that piece of land?
Yes. So, it appears that that easement, there are a number of different parcels. It appears that that easement only extends to the end of what I'm going to call the first parcel off the road, and there is a gap between there and Mr. Schrader's parcel.
Yes, some, close to 300 feet is what we're about short of the property line, just roughly. And that road never was vacated then? Not that I can find. Okay.
Well, I've got several questions. I don't have a law background. For me to interpret the state statutes and everything that's written here is beyond my ability to comprehend it. I'm curious, and perhaps it's in here, but I can't see it, why, if it's a state statute and it's black and white, why are we voting on it? I don't get that. I mean, to me, this road vacation thing should have come up long ago, and now it probably falls back perhaps on the landowner at that time. Most of our dead-end roads in the county have been vacated for the obvious reason. I mean, they don't serve a purpose. If there's more than one landowner, they, it's a party hole, you know. It becomes a mess. I don't blame the landowners for not wanting people back there. This road should have been vacated. I don't think that the landowners should have to hire an attorney, go to court, to protect their own land. I mean, there's property rights here that are involved that I feel like we need to protect. Those are pretty much my questions. And I'm sorry if I offend the property owner back there, but I don't know why anybody would take a chance on buying a landlocked property.
So, the statute that we're talking about this morning is very specific, and it addresses landlocked parcels. And the statute scheme that's there allows the commission, requires the commission, to act as either viewers to open up a road or to appoint other viewers to do that. But you have to appoint three disinterested parties, either yourselves or three others. It's not discretionary. And so, the statute addresses specifically landlocked parcels. Whether or not you should buy one or not doesn't become relevant under the statute. It simply says, if you have a landlocked parcel, you can't get to your property, then there's a mechanism in Kansas law that requires the county commission, as viewers, to open up a road to provide you access. And the particular parcel at issue meets those definitions. The landowner that you're talking about, that you're protecting the rights on, within the statute, it sets forth the damages and the ability of the landowner to recover those damages because the county commission is going in and opening up the road. So, it is like a condemnation in a certain sense, in that the landowner is getting reimbursed for all of the damages. The statute also provides that the county bears no cost in doing any of this. And so, the applicant has to pay to put in all of the road, the applicant has to pay to maintain the road. There's no expense to the county whatsoever. The damages that are incurred by the landowner whom you're taking the land for, for the road, is paid for by the applicant, not by the county. And so, there's absolutely no expense on the part of the county. And so, that's what the statutory scheme is for. We can't change that, and that's what it says. And so, if the petition meets those requirements, as Phil indicated, there really isn't any discretion that the county has to say, "We're just simply not going to do this."
Then why are we voting on it?
Because the statute says that the county commission has to, once the petition is presented, the county commission is to determine whether or not it meets those statutory requirements. That's the first step. So, did they set out the means and the reason why they need to have the road, which they did within that petition? So, the first thing that you do is you come in and you make a determination whether or not that petition meets those statutory requirements. As an example, if the landowner came in and said, "No, this, in fact, is not a landlocked parcel. They have other access that they can get to via this road." Well, that would be an example where you would say this statute doesn't apply, doesn't meet those requirements. So, that's why you're here, to make that determination. The next thing that you have to do, and the reason you have to meet, is because it states in the statute that when you do find the petition to be meeting those statutory requirements, you are then to proceed with appointing the three viewers. And so, that kind of starts the process where you determine who the three viewers are going to be. And then, there's some notice requirements that has to go through the county clerk's office that we'd need to work through. You have to give notice, you have to publish twice in the paper, you have to have a meet at the location with the viewers, the landowner, the surveyor. You have to meet within 20 days of the last publication. So, there's some other notice requirements within there. And so, the reason you're meeting this morning is because you're determining whether or not that petition is sufficient. And then, you are to proceed with appointing the viewers and start that process. That's why you have to meet.
One other question, then. If that road has never been vacated, isn't the county responsible to put that road back in? I mean, it's still, it's still on the books, as you would say. I mean, if that road has not been vacated, it's still a county road.
It's still a road.
So, it should be put back in?
Well, so, the issue on that is whether or not, you know, if we have to go in and upgrade that road, keep in mind that the statute, which is the same statute that that road was put in, but the statute requires that the applicant maintain that road. So, that road would continually be maintained by the applicant. So, if we have to go in and do anything to that road based upon this petition, that's still maintenance. And that road's still there, and any road that's serving that indicates the statute, they'd have to maintain that.
But wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be, they would have to maintain that road once that road is vacated?
They'll got to put, it still needs to be maintained. It's still a road that's there, and our position would be they have to pay for that.
Back on the last 300 feet that we're talking about, and I'll just use a really loose figure of one acre. I mean, does the applicant have to purchase that one acre?
That's what I'm saying. Any damages, so, as you, as the viewers, will also determine what those damages are. That's part of the process. So, when you go in and you meet and you open up the road, it's got to be designated, and there's a whole process that goes with that. But then, you also, not only certify that it's a public road, you also certify the damages that are to be assessed against that property and back to the owner. But it's got to be based upon, you know, you can't just say you get $50,000. It's got to be based upon some. But yeah, you're correct. If it was, if farm grounds sell them for $4,500 an acre and you take an acre of ground, you're going to assess what those damages are.
I think more specifically, though, to address that, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that county pays the damages and then gets reimbursed by the applicant.
Correct.
Procedurally.
And the road has to be built and maintained to county standards?
Statute says not less than 40 feet nor more than 100.
Hundred, and wide?
Width.
And width?
You know, my goal today, if the county commission approves the petition today, I would be hopeful that you could hold back for a week to give the owner of the ground and the applicant a chance to determine whether or not they're able to work out any type of private easement. Because it would be better for them, I think, to have a private arrangement where they could control the use of that road. Because once you open that up, that becomes a public road, and anybody can drive back there and do whatever they want because it's a public road. If they were able to work out a private arrangement between themselves, then obviously, they could construct whatever dirt road or any road they wanted to do, and they could gate it, they could have whatever arrangement they wanted to. And at that point, if they entered into an agreement for an easement or whatever they're working on, I could see a situation where they could come and ask the commission to vacate that road that's there now, that's on the books, so that the only thing that would be there would be like a permanent easement between the landowners. And so, you know, depending on what you do this morning, if you approve the petition, I'd like to give the parties an opportunity to see if there's any willingness on their parts to try to work that out before you proceed with opening up the road.
This seems kind of funny, but we would build a road and immediately ask for it to be vacated?
What I'm saying is, wait, you know, if you decide that the petition's sufficient, and the parties are able to work something out where there's some form of an easement that allows access to the Schrader property, they could enter into an agreement for an easement to do that. Then, there'd be no necessity to have a road at all, and you could vacate the one that was put in in 1894. That's what I was saying.
Well, and I'm talking about the last 300 feet where there never was a road.
But even if they entered into a permanent easement?
I get that part of it. But the part that we farmed over the road isn't the question that I have. Mine is beyond that, the last...
We would never put that road in if they enter into an agreement. They would have an agreement that would address that in the form of an easement, if they did that. Now, if they don't, then the petition before you is yes, put in a road, including that 300 feet.
So, if we're going to vote on this today, I mean, can we stall our vote to see if they can come to an agreement?
Yeah.
Or, which, where's the cart and where's the horse?
Well, the cart is you need to approve the petition. Once you approve the petition, then you're going to need to appoint the viewers. And then, once you appoint the viewers, then the notice requirement kicks in, and we'd need to publish in the paper for two times. So, the timeline that's going to trigger things is when you start the publication. Because you can't have your hearing more than 20 days after the second publication. So, that's really where your timeline starts. And so, you know, my recommendation today would be to, if you're going to approve the petition, I would recommend that you approve the petition, reset this matter for a week, and determine, or appoint the viewers.
This, there's too much on for next Tuesday. This would be the 27th at the earliest.
So, whatever that date would be, if you're amenable to that, then you could determine whether or not the parties reached an agreement at that point. If they did not, appoint the viewers, start the publication, and get the process going.
Quick question here, is that I, after driving out there again and knowing pretty much the land lay there, between the landowner and the petitioner here is that, I look at it as that, if I farmed it, I wouldn't want a road going through there just to farm this little bit of land down there. Is there any method or way to take that road down to the south edge of that property line, go over to the river, and the petitioner build just a, between him and the landowner, build a road right along the river, the tree line, go in there and clear it back to his property, and without disturbing much of the land farming at all?
So, you determine?
That's, I just, that was just a thought that I had.
You, as the viewers, will determine what the appropriate road should be, if it gets to that point. But it's still a public road. So, you know, I would think that that would be something that you would need to work with our staff, engineering, and determine what the appropriate road would be.
So, if I'm going to go out here in the middle of my pasture, and I'm just going to put a road from here to that pond, I have to build it to county specs, even though it's just a dirt road that I'm using?
We've got to build it, it's got to be at least 40 feet wide, no wider than 100, and then you determine what the standard's going to be, but you've got...
No. If it's your road on your property, what we're talking about is opening a public road. That's what the statute provides for.
Okay, so...
So, a public road has to be...
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if the landowner goes in and puts in this little road along this river back to there, just because I want to be able to get back there to cut firewood or whatever, they have to build it to county specs?
No, no. But if they do that, they still have to provide access to the applicant's property. They have to have an agreement that gives them the right to use it, which is the same thing we're talking about. If they entered into a private easement with them to do that, they can put anything, put a dirt road in for all, I mean, that doesn't matter.
But then, that could be between those parties?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Gotcha.
I think you're right. I think what we need to do is, you know, look at approving this petition, and then go ahead and table on it, and seeing if these landowners can work this out to the point where we don't have to worry about it. If they work it out, then we'll come back at, you know, and look at a vacate of that and take care of it.
And they're here, the owners are here as well. They all may have comments as well.
Well, I'm going to take exception to just one thing you said there, Joe. I don't think we would need to table it at that point, because we would have approved it, and it would have went into the next step of arbitration between the landowner and the other person. There wouldn't be, we wouldn't, there would be no need to table it.
Okay, you're right.
Mike, this is Commissioner Wees. I have a quick question for you. The road that has been farmed over and is now gone, if someone in a farmer in a county decides to farm a dirt public road, whose responsibility is it to put that back into service? Does that fall back on the petitioner, or would that fall back on the landowners?
Well, we'd have to look at the circumstances involved, but probably the landowner that farmed it over.
And in response to what he's asking, the county would not, I mean, in this case, the road that's been farmed over, if they put it back into service, the landowner's going to have to pay for that, or the county?
We'd have to look at that, because, you know, this is such an old road, and the standards that were then versus now have changed a little bit from 1894. And so, we'd have to kind of look at that. But for purposes of today, I mean, we think that the applicant's going to need to pay that.
This is Commissioner Shadwick, and generally, my thoughts are the same as Commissioner Vidrickson in his comments earlier. But the fact is, today, according to the county councilor, we have no discretion and need to go forward.
And this is Commissioner Wees. I, too, agree that it's common sense that, by statute, we need to go ahead with this, and then hopefully, the parties that are involved can come together and reach an agreement that best suits each one of their needs.
And they're here, they may have comments for you.
Yeah. State your name, please.
Elliot Schrader. Good morning, commissioners. So, a couple of thoughts on kind of what's been discussed. First and foremost, my attorney have gotten, my attorney and I have gotten back together. We've approached the other payer and their attorney and offered them another amount for a private easement. That hasn't borne any fruit. We haven't heard anything back on whether or not they do that. Just this morning, I did catch some head nodding that they probably would not be interested in reaching that private agreement, so hopefully they might have some comment. But having this public road built and taking up the commissioner's time and going through this process isn't any interest of mine. I just want to make it back to my property. I think it would make the most sense to come up with a private easement. But if that cannot be done, I would like to use the existing 1894 easement to get me within the 265 feet that I need, and then petition for that last 265 265 feet to be obtained, and then to pay those damages to the landowner. I don't want to put words in the county engineer's mouth, but I've spoken with them, and they have given some insight that they're not, as far as the easement goes that already exists, the 1894 easement, they're not interested in bringing that up to any sort of standard, especially if that were to eventually be gated as a public road. And then, the last 265 feet, there is a minimum width, but they're not interested in making me build it up to certain standards. So, and then, as far as the timing of the next step would go, I would also recommend that it move forward, but I would like for, I think Commissioner Vidrickson said, there would be no need for another meeting to put those notices out. As Mr. Montoya said, we could basically maybe give a one-week timeframe, put the notices out a week from, let's say, today, unless you hear back from the private landowners that we've come to an agreement. If you don't hear back from us, then go ahead and put the notices out without a need to vote again on putting them out. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
If I own this piece of property, which I've got the same situation in another county, if you want to go hunting on that road, I own that property from the center of the road that way. You have to get permission from me to go hunting on that road, that half. Am I correct?
I don't think you're going to be hunting on a public road.
But to the center of the road, if you want to go hunting, I own that property. If you want to go hunting, you got to get permission from the landowner to hunt on the road, that half.
I don't think they're hunting on the road.
Well, they're trespassing.
It's a public road.
To a point.
I will just briefly speak to that. The purpose of the easement or the public road, whichever way it goes, is to just get from the highway back to my ground where I will be doing my activities. The only purpose of being on the adjacent landowner's land is simply to just cross it without stopping.
Any more?
Okay. I'm Mary Sue Wellerius Ash, and I'm the landowner that you're talking about that owns the 250 feet or whatever it is. That land has been in my family's possession for many years. It's pristine farmland. It's never been anything but farmland. I object to the fact that somebody can buy a piece of landlocked land and then just blatantly persuade, or force me, I guess, force me to have to gain them access to their property. We did not know that there was landlocked land back there. It was a surprise to us. And you know that if there's a road there that the public has access to, or he has access to, his friends will have access to it, his friends' friends, pretty soon, it'll become a dumping ground for trash. You know, I guess I'm not quite sure what my position, or what my rights are on this, but I'm totally opposed to granting access through my land. And there is another way that he can get to his property by going through the Saline River, the Saline River which borders it. He can go through, he could get access through that way to get to the land.
Okay. Anybody else from the public would like to speak? Any more questions? We'll bring it back to commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the petition as presented.
I second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-114 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
So, that passes 3-2.
Commissioners, I may, you also need to appoint three of you that are going to act as the viewers in this matter, which would be the three that go out, look at the road, and meet with the engineer, and have that location.
Is it necessary to do that today, or can we bring that back?
We can't do anything until they do that. But if you want to bring that back, that's fine. We just need to do that before we can do any publication or anything.
Right. Okay. Okay, that moves us on to F.
Commissioners' comments?
I just wanted to remind the commission and the public about two meetings next week. On Monday, the 19th, will be the canvas for the primary election, and that will be next door in 107B on Monday morning, I believe at 9:00 AM. Is that correct? So, of course, remind commissioners that to be here Monday as well as Tuesday. And then, Tuesday, we will have our regular meeting in this room. And then, at 11 o'clock, we will be over at 203 North 10th for a discussion with the consultants regarding the downtown facility master plan. So, just wanted to remind everybody of those.
Okay. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes 5-0. We'll see you next week.